Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting, Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. May I impose upon you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Eric, for the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the screen there, we can show then what we'll be discussing tonight. We have three public hearings related to commercial vehicles, water rates, and community development block grant application. We have a discussion and I'd say a little presentation as well. Sewer extension study, we've asked to try to understand what it would involve if we were to decide that we wanted the sewer to extend down towards Hanaford from where it stops, which is currently by Red Hook Commons. We have a resolution to approve those other public hearing items and to discuss the CBBG application. There's been a request to support a grant to improve and replace signage, amongst other things, for freeway bike trails. And we have a grant application going up to receive some funds, hopefully for our generator. It's the Justice Court-related grant opportunity, an annual opportunity, and we're working with Judge Treibwasser on that. We also have some resolutions to award bids related to highway materials. So, without further ado, let's go right into the supervisor's report. As you know, this is the first meeting of the month, at which time we review the finances at the conclusion of the previous month. This is for the period ending September 30th. We began with an opening balance of just over $6 million, had receipts of $104,000 and change. We dispersed $527,000 with the remaining balance of $5,925,395. You have in your packets the materials, some budget adjustments as proposed by the bookkeeper and Conway. And your variance, monthly variance reports as well. Were there any questions related to that? Okay. If not, and I will just say as an update, we did get a rough estimate of what the mortgage tax receipts would be for the second half of the year. The mortgage tax here is different than the calendar year. It is from March, sorry, April through September, the second half. And so it looks like we're gonna be just around budget, maybe a notch underneath. So my fear was that maybe it would come in. But there's nothing significant as far as a variance there on the revenue. And I think we're going to exceed some of our estimates, certainly related to building department fees. We have large buildings requesting permits barred with dormitories and so on and so forth. So I think you'll see a nice bump up in that budget line as well. Okay, very good. Any questions, discussion? If not, I have an entertaining motion to accept the supervisor's report.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Who would like to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Myself, thank you very much. Deanna, we also have the town clerk's monthly report.
The town clerk's report for the period of September 1st to September 30th, 2023. The total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,490.73. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay-neuter program, $43. The amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $180. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, Total state, county, and local revenues, $9,054.
Very good. And for folks at home, if you see the large number there, town clerk's fees, that's because that includes also the garbage receipts as part of the monthly report.
And I certify that vouchers numbered 30996 to 31101, processed in the month of September 2023, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, public hearing. So, well, before public hearing, let's do announcements, shall we? Something that I think is very important for village residents and village residents only, although the impact obviously is felt throughout the community. We have an opportunity at the request, I might add, of this town board to ask the village municipalities whether they would consider holding a referendum this fall in order to increase, as permitted by state law, the stipend level that is granted to our wonderful volunteer firefighters. It has been at a level of $500 to offset their expenses that they incur since it was adopted by referendum back in 2007. And so this is an opportunity for the residents and electors of both villages, because the fire companies are under the purview of the villages, to get out on October 24th and express their opinion about whether or not they would like to support an increase in that stipend for the volunteers. I can tell you that if we had to pay, and we do contract for these services here in the town, if we had to pay for us, it would be a significant financial burden to all of the municipalities here. And so you can infer by the fact that we are making this request to the village municipalities about how we feel about this initiative. But of course, with all elections and referendum, it's purely up to the residents of the community. And so we'd like to let you know that that date has been established and is included here in this notice to increase from 500 to 1,200 on October 24th. You would be voting in the village, if you live in the village of Tibbely, would be voting right there at the village hall, the Byster.
Firehouse, no.
Oh, Firehouse, sorry, Firehouse. And then Village of Red Hook, I think that is happening at Village Hall, if I'm not mistaken. Excuse me. And so that's 12 noon to 9:00 PM on the 24th, which is a Tuesday. And so we want to make sure that you're aware of that. We'll do a news alert as a reminder for folks as the topic approaches. And again, this is just for village residents because the fire companies are under the purview of the villages. The town is going to pick up that expense. In fact, that expense hasn't been included and is contemplated in the budget for 2024. This would be effective January 1st of this year. And so we want you to know and hope that you'll participate in democracy. All right. Speaking of, next Tuesday from 10 to 12, Congressman Pat Ryan will have his mobile office at Saffers. He'll be here between 10 and 12 at Town Hall. And they hope to assist you with any needs that you have that they can assist you with. And here are some of the examples. Next Tuesday, 10 to 12, no contact information. I think we have already sent out a news alert on this topic. And if you can't make that one, here's the schedule for the next few weeks in the immediate vicinity. All right. Any other announcements, folks, that we want to let people know? Okay, there, one thing I will tell you and we'll be sure to provide you the necessary information. Obviously, there's a general election happening Tuesday, November 7th. There are, because of redistricting, there are new districts. And folks will be voting at different locations. You'll have different district numbers, in many cases, not all cases. And so we'll be sure to put that map up on the website to help assist you in locating your appropriate polling site. All right, anything else, folks? We'll do Halloween stuff at our next meeting? Yeah? Scary enough? All right, well, we certainly have reached the point of our first public hearing at 7:35, we're running a little bit late. Deanna, could I impose upon you to read the notice, please?
Notice of continued public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a continued public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on October 10th, 2023, at 7:35 PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law, number F, proposed of 2023, entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 131 of the Town Code" entitled "Vehicles and Traffic" to provide for regulation of stop intersections and crosswalks and exclusion of certain commercial vehicles from specified local highways, to limit the operation of heavier trucks and similar vehicles on certain highways in the town, which will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the public while still providing suitable connection with all routes entering or leaving the town. Town Board has determined that the proposed local law is classified as an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Written comments may be sent by email in advance of the earring to townclerk@redhookny.gov by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note "local law," number F, proposed of 2023, in the subject. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 27th, 2023. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Okay, for the folks at home, just a reminder, if you've been listening in on several of the last meetings, we already have a law in place at the moment. This is just a modification of it designed to prevent cut-through truck traffic on our local roadways. It's not designed to limit trucks that are doing work or making deliveries on our town roads. It also establishes a more efficient, both cost-effective and efficient in terms of time, way of updating our inventory of signage related to our roads. Okay. At this time, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Really?
Myself. Okay. So 7:45, shall we do another public hearing? Deanna, may I impose upon you again, please? Water rates.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a continued public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on October 10th, 2023, at 7:45 local time to hear all interested persons on proposed modification of the water rates and charges for water district number one. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended a modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from $49.48 to $52 for up to 9,000 gallons and from $6.02 to $6.30 per 1,000 gallons over $9,000 as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 27th, 2023. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Would somebody like to speak on this issue? At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on water rates. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on that topic.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, and this is a continuation of a previous public hearing. We are a few minutes away from our third public hearing on the community development block grant application. So I'm wondering if we can squeeze in one or two items. Brandy, I think our presentation's gonna be longer than seven minutes, isn't it?
It might be ten or fifteen.
Oh, really?
I don't know. I can speed through the slides if you want to just spin through them.
Not quickly? Okay, well, I'll have to juggle here.
Can we just talk about the sewer extension? For seven minutes?
That's what we're, that's what I was asking.
I'm at the side block one.
No, no. I just have to pull it up now. Okay, Brandy, you are on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brandy Nelson with Tian Ban, and I'm one of the engineers that works with the town. And several months ago, we were before you with a proposal to evaluate the formation of a sewer district through the TND corridor. So if we scroll down to the presentation outline, what we'll cover this evening is just a quick review of the scope of the study. And then the updates we want to provide are related to tasks one and two, and a quick review of the traditional neighborhood zone, the proposed sewer district, and what the next steps are proposed to be. So the scope of the study was to evaluate the need for sewer system and, if needed, to recommend an approach to moving forward. The specific scope includes four tasks. The first being the sewer district needs analysis and delineation, which is identifying the reason why and where sewer would be served in the town. The second task is wastewater flow development. Those two tasks, we've completed, and we're gonna give you an update tonight. But we're going to need some direction from you to move forward with tasks three and four. And we'll make a recommendation, kind of want to see up or down if you're in agreement with us. So if we continue down to the next slide. So the study area in question is generally the area that's south of the village in the town along the Route 9 corridor between Town Hall and the Hanaford Shopping Plaza. Right now, that area is a mix of commercial and residential. And the zoning allows for mixed use and additional density to be built out in that area. But one of the challenges we found, and I've been on the planning boards, consulting, review engineer for a number of years, is that because that area is not served by central utilities, there is a portion of the area that's served by village water, the rest of the area is served by wells, and a portion of the area, or excuse me, in sewer service, everybody's on septic systems. And so what we found is we can't really achieve the densities imagined in the TND because of the limited infrastructure. There's also varying soil conditions in some places. There's level ground, and there's good gravelly soils. That's the case for the Traditions Development. They were fortunate in finding good gravelly soils for their onsite septic for that neighborhood. But in other areas, anyplace where there's a hill, you can assume that there's gonna be some shallow rock underneath that. So that too is a limitation for septic systems. And then in terms of natural resources, most of that corridor isn't wetlands or streams. But as you get sort of the east and west edges of it, there are some natural resource constraints that we'd want to be protective of. So if we continue down, other conditions include there's a very wide range of parcel sizes. Some parcels are very big, some are very small. And with the smaller parcels in particular, it's almost impossible to meet the health department requirements for well and septic setbacks. And creating the density and providing the sewer water would support the traditional neighborhood development zoning that was created for that location. And based on that, we recommend that you move forward to provide sewer for the TND zone. So just to back up for the public, the TND zone was created in 2011. And the goals that are stated were to reinforce the land use pattern, to support the emerging commercial center that was growing in that area, and to increase density so that you could preserve green spaces and agricultural lands elsewhere in the town by transferring density into the core along Route 9, which makes a lot of sense from a transportation standpoint and an infrastructure standpoint. There are three subzones in the TND. The commercial center, which is shown in red on the graphic. The residential, which is shown in brown on the east and west side of the red. On the west side, that's where the Hoffman, formerly known as Hoffman, now known as Traditions Development, has been constructed. And then south of the Hanaford Plaza is an office industrial TND. All right, so in terms of where the proposed sewer district would be, if we follow the outline of the TND for industrial commercial, for industrial office, for commercial, and for residential on the east side of Route 9, it's the area that is bound in the blue line. We left the Tradition Neighborhood out. They are currently served by their own wastewater system that has been constructed and is under the operation of the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So this image would give you the idea of the full range of a sewer district, should it be created. And just for interest, we overlapped it with the water service area. So where there is public water is the area that's outlined in green so you could get a sense of maybe where some of your higher densities could be based on the current extent of water service. So then if we scroll down, then this rolls us right into our second task. So once we've defined the area, what we do is we go and we do a parcel-by-parcel assessment looking at what the zoning allows and what the current development is onsite. So some of these parcels are totally built out. We wouldn't expect to see any additional development on those parcels. Other parcels have capacity. So the old Ruby site, for instance, has potentially got room to have some additional development on it. That's just one example. Using a combination of metered water data from the water department for parcels that are served by public water and where we don't have metered water data, using the DEC's recommended methodology for estimating flow, we go parcel by parcel and we estimate what the potential wastewater flow is currently and in the future if it were to have additional build-out. Our current existing flow estimate for the proposed district, which is the area outlined in red, and I'm gonna get into, I need to take a step backward. So we are here tonight to explore with you creating a district that would be the area that's bound in blue, but to sub-phase based on flow so that we don't get too far out over our skis, so to speak, and start building capacity and infrastructure where there's no proposed development even in the works right now. So we focus then just in the business, excuse me, in the commercial TND corridor. The current flow rate that we estimate for that area is 28,500 gallons per day. And again, that's a combination of meter data and estimates. And then if we project forward to a full build scenario, we assume that that could get up to 57,100 gallons per day. So it could almost double under a full build scenario. We think that that's enough to bite off right now in terms of moving forward with defining a sub-area for a district that would be developed and that would be the basis of our engineering report going forward. So our goal out of this task is to put together an engineering report where we could seek funding and grant opportunities through Environmental Facilities Corporation to extend infrastructure. But we need to start moving into a phase where we would be doing some cost and benefit analysis. And so, again, I think vision-wise and planning-wise, you want to think about your whole TND ultimately being sewered. But we think it would be prudent to just focus on the core development area right now, which again is from the village line down to where the Hanaford Plaza is, either side of Route 9. So the first bullet there, maximum potential flow estimate. When we project out for the full TND, all three sub-phases, we got up to about 119,000 gallons per day. So that seemed like, it's a very, it's a projection based just on zoning. So there's not any projects in the pipeline that would back that up. And so given that it's such a projection, we think it's more prudent to stick with focusing the district creation around the area of current development and additional development occurring in that area to get you up to that 57,000 gallons per day. So that would result in a phased implementation plan. We could engage in a process with the owners of those properties to see, like, what plans you have for developing your parcel. Some people may not be thinking about developing their parcel because they feel like they can't seek its full potential without sewer. So I think there's an opportunity there for some public engagement with some of the key property owners in that corridor. But that would be a step we'd want to work with you on before we finalize the report. Thanks for that. So our recommendation is, as I said, to focus on the commercial center TND, to go forward in phases, to do some stakeholder engagement, and talk with some of the key property owners about development objectives. We don't want to overshoot the amount of demand that might be generated from that, but we also don't want to be too conservative. We want to make sure we're finding the right balance as far as growth for the community. Once we have an idea of the flow number that we want to work with, then we'll move forward with task three and four that were outlined at the start of this, where we would provide an evaluation of what it means in terms of treatment. So the treatment facility would be at the village's wastewater plant, which was designed initially to be expandable. But we need to get into the details of what that entails and look at the costs and the layout for a collection system, and then look at alternatives. So alternatives analysis is part of the EFC standard report. And then we would put costs together and come up with a benefit cost per individual parcel. So those are all the things that need to further be developed, and we'll come back to you guys with. But we wanted to get some feedback from you on the phased approach to pursuing the district. I think that's it.
Very good.
Do you want me to sit down and you can go to your public hearing and then?
No, no, no. I think it's, I think it's fine.
Okay.
We'll just chat for a few minutes if we could.
Sure. Would you like to sit down if you want?
Yeah.
Fine, either way.
Sitting in the lab. Questions, board members, questions?
I have a question. Regarding the cost to an individual parcel. Obviously, there are businesses that are there that are static. But how do you determine, say, for example, if they, the Ruby's? But how do you determine, say, for example, if they, the Ruby's facility is, say, one of those parcels is going to become one kind of commercial entity and then go into, say, become a restaurant or something that has a far greater need for capacity? How do you try to estimate that for this purpose?
So I'm going to just clarify that I am here on behalf of my colleague Erin Moore, who's the wastewater engineer who does this all over, all over the Northeast, actually. So she will better respond to that question. But in general, we're trying to find a benefit unit per quantity of flow. And so it should be apportioned. But where we can understand that there's a plan in place for a certain amount of development, we would rather, you know, have that stakeholder engagement piece, learn a little bit more and, and try and get to a situation where maybe a landowner wants to reserve a certain amount of capacity. Then if they sell the property or develop it, they, they have a known quantity associated with sewer capacity at that location.
Exactly, considering like where the, where the fire was in the Ross properties and a mixed use development that had been planned there. And there was going to be, you know, a restaurant there's, as well as living quarters, you know, markets upstairs. I'm just trying to get an idea of making sure going forward that we're more conservative and have greater flow that would provide more, make it more attractive for certain kinds of businesses to want to come here as opposed to, you know, having still be a plumbing supply place.
Yeah, and, and there's, it's a little bit of science and a little bit of art. You know, we start with the zoning. And as we get into the details, Erin has developed very detailed calculations for every single parcel. And we can visit some of those assumptions. We can meet with stakeholder, with landowners and say, this is our assumption. Are these reasonable in terms of what you're thinking about now?
Anybody else?
I guess I'm just wondering on, you know, the three-phase approach, would there be a substantial amount of front end loading in the first phase for, you know, trunk lines and whatnot that would have to go in?
That's a good question. I should get back to you on that one. Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that question, but that is a really.
Because I'm just wondering if, you know, we would have to know the cost of that to see if it's reasonable to, we might have to spread it over the whole thing.
Right, and so there's sort of two distinct things that we want to recommend. One is that we would do a map plan and report that would create a district that is the whole area outlined in blue. But we wouldn't, we would create a sub-district within that that would be the initial first service area. You're right, that would have some of the key infrastructure costs associated with it. But I, I need to get back to you on how that would be distributed to, to future phases.
Okay.
So what's not included in the map is the void in between. And so we'll have to figure out, will, will that be something that you'll further explore, Brandy? Obviously, the 20, the infamous 21 properties between the plant and the township.
Yes, so that, that is a discussion that we should have with the mayor.
Yeah.
The village has, within the village municipal boundaries, a sewer service area that they have defined. And it doesn't come all the way to the south property line. So they would need to amend their map or easements would have to be put in place across properties. And so, yes, that's something to be explored with the mayor.
And then I guess the next question is the expansion of the plant itself. It's modular in nature. What, what would we be looking at for another 57,000 or an additional 28 and a half or something like that?
We'll work up the costs as part of task three.
Right. And I think, you know, working with Crest, we'll need to figure out moving forward with agreements or potential agreements, because I don't think we necessarily want to go too far down the road, figuratively speaking, until we have some of these discussions and agreements in place with the village.
Right, I mean, there's, there's two things. One is the, if you're going to, if what's being proposed is a study that would involve sharing plant resources, you'd certainly have to achieve a conversation about that with the village. But also whether or not this is a, proposed to be a town district or, or as, you know, one of your other districts is, a county district, which is an option and it probably both ought to be considered pros and cons.
Well, because wasn't the idea at one point, I know this is going back really far, but wasn't the plant, the packaged plant at Traditions? And one of the reasons the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater was interested in operating it was because they were talking with the village about having that be part of an expansion area. So I don't know what the capacity ended up being there if they went with a slightly bigger plant than Traditions or not. Do we know that?
No, my understanding, well, Brandy knows. Brandy, you could answer better than I could. But it, it could be connected, but at this point, it's really sort of too late. I mean, they're going with the system they have, right?
Yeah, I, they essentially installed a very large septic system. So they didn't end up going with any kind of plant with a service discharge. They do, they do operate under an arrangement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater for operation and maintenance on that system. But I, I think if there were shared services in the future, it would probably be on the operations end of things. But not so much in terms of providing capacity to other locations.
So in the end, they didn't go with that connection, connective option?
No, they didn't.
I mean, it would seem to make sense if we're going to establish a town central sewer district that it be operated by the village. I mean, the more users, it's a special, special benefit assessment district. The more users, the more pockets to distribute any associated costs. I don't think necessarily this is that big a district that we would want to operate it. I don't know that we feel the need, right, to get into the sewer, well.
Well, we wouldn't own the plant, so it's difficult.
TBD, what's that?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of details and stuff to look at, but we would not own the plant, so it doesn't, I think, seems to make more sense.
And we have achieved getting water down to a lot of these parcels and it's village water. So it seems only logical from an efficiency standpoint. But again, you'll look at those things and, and you'll, you'll give us the suite of options, right?
We will make some, yeah, we will be doing some alternative assessment on that that will include both capital and operation maintenance costs and alternatives.
So I would be curious, Brandy, this is great. In addition to the questions that have already been asked, and I, I think this probably falls under the scope of task three, but I would love to see a little more detail about, I, I hear you on the art and science of developing the flow estimates, but just would love to understand a little more methodology. And I guess I, I want to make sure we don't underbuild. I hear you about not overbuilding, but I want to make sure that if we're going to invest in the infrastructure, we, we're thinking real seriously about what are going to happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have a, you know, we've been sort of building our engineering report as we're going through this process. And we have a whole section on the methodology. It depends on if it's a residential property or if it's a commercial property. And then we've made some assumptions. And so I'd be happy to send you that methodology if you want to read it and just give us some feedback on it, that'd be great. I'm not an expert, but I'd love to see it. Yeah, sure.
And I would just follow up that, especially since there's really a large parcel of land across from the Hanaford that is zoned for light industrial, but also for lodging. And if a hotel chain, say, wanted to put in something they have across the river, you know, like a merit suites or anything else. I mean, I can't imagine anybody wanting to build any kind of substantive lodging without a sewer. Because it would probably be way too expensive for them to develop their own plant and everything else. So that, that's kind of following what Julie's saying. I, you know, I want to make sure that we have sufficient infrastructure to be able to attract the kinds of, make it more attractive for certain kinds of businesses in keeping with our zoning.
Okay, thank you.
I'm cringing. Because I know the paperwork between here and there is enormous. Having done so many grants over the years and, and once we start, you know, the people at EFC are terrific, but we're talking about a lot of life work.
Well, we're really still very, very conceptual.
Very conceptual right now.
So we'll just get some more information.
Anything else you want us to think about?
No, but it sounds like you're okay with taking the phased approach. We want to talk about the methodology of how we're getting to that Q number, but we should move forward with our tasks three and four, assuming that phased approach, so.
Absolutely.
Fair assessment?
I mean, I think, I, maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
That's a maybe.
I don't know that we have enough information to decide that at this point, but it seems like a good plan. But, you know, we could at some point, again, when we get a little bit firmer cost numbers, you know, we may just decide that we have to do it all, you know, all at once to spread the cost, so who knows?
I, I would, I would say if you follow the Village of Red Hook's process, you know, they built their plant initially for 50,000 gallons per day. So I don't remember what all the benefit unit costs were there. But, you know, the reason they ended up with the district that they did was because they were trying to find the right balance between how much area to serve and, and how to keep it affordable for people in the community. So, you know, that's what we're going to go through now with this sub-phase area. And if you guys say that sounds like an affordable number, you know, then I think we can look at expanding that service area.
And do we know what the excess capacity for the Village plant is? Or could be, or do we have any of that yet?
Zero, zero.
Well, I mean, if they, you know, because they'd have to want to add. So I don't know if they have.
But it is modular.
It's modular, but right now, our understanding is that what's remaining has spoken for the owner of, the previous owner of the plant, who has had, previously, the previous owner had approvals for the development off of Fisk, that that was going to use up any remainder. That was the whole point of going out for the Mid Hudson momentum fund.
And that's a good example of why we don't want to overbuild, because the cost has to be carried by someone in the short term. And so, you know, there's no guarantee that if we project out that things will happen. Erin is just texting me to remind me, to remind everyone that there's no guarantee that. And, and we want to be careful of not having too high of a user fee that is, is a burden on people. Especially for those undeveloped parcels.
I guess I have to rephrase my question. Do we have any idea on the capacity that could be added?
How many modules and what type of?
You know, under speed permits and whatnot. Because if they can't get 119,000 more, then we don't, we can't go there, but, you know.
Some years ago, there was a study that proposed a joint sewer district, and it was a much larger plant at that point in time. And I will dig that number out and I'll get that to you, what they had planned for at that time. But we've, we have looked at the most recent engineer report for the current plan, and it does say that it's expandable. So they just put in that first 50,000.
Well, I, I would just point out, we've made substantial, excuse me, steps in the right direction for achieving the vision of that area. We've got the zoning in place. We've built the infrastructure, the sidewalk. My very first project, capital project here was the sidewalk on the east side. We've got the water now down there. There were no streetlights, there were no streetlights on, on Route 9, on this extension. So we've got a lot of things in place. And, you know, I think this is the last major infrastructure item to achieve before those parcels can realize their full potential. And so we're going to hopefully get a peek at what that looks like. We've already had some of the landowners informally express interest in, in knowing that because it will help them design their properties based upon whether or not they need to accommodate septic. And as we've learned, both in Upper Red Hook and down here in the TND CC, some of these properties are rather shallow, right, in their depth. And so asking them to all have individual septics obviously means that there's a lack of flexibility there, so. Good, well, thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Erin. I know you're there somewhere, Erin.
She's listening.
She's listening, she's listening to us. We appreciate it and we look forward to getting more updates and seeing what feasibility looks like. Anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Appreciate it. Okay, we are back a little late for our third public hearing. Brandy, did you want to stay a minute for that?
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
I'll just, um, so I've got to get back on the other one here. Third public hearing. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read.
Notice of public hearing Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on October 10th, 2023 at 7:55 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested persons regarding the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Application. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding the town's application. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. Please note 2024 Community Development Block Grant Application. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone so that arrangements can be made by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 27th, 2023. Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Would somebody like to speak on this topic? And the purpose of the public hearing for the folks at home is solicit your idea for a grant application and also to get feedback on things that we've considered. And each year, I think each year, we are talking for it. We've been successful on many occasions. And this year, we are talking about possibly extending a pathway all the way to Hanaford. You know, it gets close, it gets to Holy Cow. And then there's an informal dirt path that some people use, which we, we don't think is necessarily the, the best way to get there, but obviously the only way, safe way, because there's that giant boulder at the corner of Hanaford Drive and Route 9. So would anybody like to speak on this topic? Okay. Very good. At this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Certainly.
Thank you, Christine. Second bill? Ball of favor, Jacob?
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
And myself?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Brandy, before you leave, is there anything you would like to tell us about from an engineering standpoint on this pathway? You want to describe it for one minute? What's being proposed in the grant application?
Sure, so the proposal for the Community Development Block Grant would be for a public facilities grant, which is a new category that the town is eligible for this year, which allows for the extension of infrastructure, including sidewalks. We have noticed over the years that there is a pretty good footpath that folks have developed that runs along the property line between St. Margaret's and the Hanaford, behind the Holy Cow. And the proposal would include extending, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I want to say it's about 800 linear feet of sidewalk to connect from the terminal end of the crosswalk by Holy Cow, parallel to Route 9, and then turning perpendicular from Route 9 along the north property line of St. Margaret's and Hanaford to the existing sidewalk that terminates about 100 feet from the north property line on Hanaford Drive. Sorry, guys, that's a little hard to follow, isn't it? And we have put together a cost estimate for a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk with lights. And we have put together a cost estimate for a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk with lights. And it's around four hundred thousand dollars for design permitting, construction of that sidewalk facility. We would need to obtain an easement from Hanaford for the sidewalk. And outside of that, I don't know if anyone has any questions? But it, it's basically formalizing that footpath that has developed since the Hanaford's gone into place. Provides a safe linkage.
So, um, yeah, you know, do you know offhand what the incline is for that?
I don't know, there is a slight rise. The, the, I tried to go down there tonight actually to look at it, but from the Hanaford, it's a slight downhill to the north, and then it's another like downhill towards Saint Margaret's with the low point being on the Saint Margaret's property, and then it's pretty flat after that. So there's a gentle slope in there.
So it's just a gentle slope, it's not sort of up with a flat and up with a flat? It's just like a gentle slope?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And, um, so that would meet A D A?
Well, so A D A, to the extent we can meet A D A, we would meet A D A, yeah, absolutely. Where the existing roadway right away is, I, we would need to check that. But one of the first things that we'll do is we'll get a survey of that area because there's not any geographic information there.
Right, I mean, I guess I just want to make sure it's not like ten percent.
Yeah, no, eyeballing it, it didn't feel like ten percent.
Pretty gradual.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Randy.
Sure.
And then do you, do you have, um, do you want to go over this again, just for folks at home?
The maps for folks to understand?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So there are different areas within our community where because of the income or the demographics, the, the areas themselves are eligible for funding. Outside of that, certain types of projects that remove, for example, barriers to make public spaces accessible, so on and so forth, and they too can be funded. This turns out to be within the southeast quadrant.
The blue area.
The blue area, which is deemed to be eligible. So Hanaford is somewhere around here.
Right, so this project is.
Within the zone.
Definitely within that zone.
And just, I think at the last meeting, you guys authorized a letter of intent to be submitted to Dutchess County, and that was submitted. And today I checked the grant portal and they've opened the application to you. So although we haven't heard that they've endorsed it, they usually don't open the application to you unless they have endorsed. So they're allowing us to move forward to that next step. And the application is due on the twentieth, which is in ten short days. So I'll work with you, Deanna, just to get a copy of the resolution and all of that for inclusion with the grant application. Great.
True.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy. All right, we can, oh, we didn't do public comments. Anybody want to make some generic public comments, not related to the public hearing? Going once, going twice, okay. Thank you very much. Let's jump to the agenda items themselves. We conducted the discussion on potential sewer extension. For a resolution, we have a resolution to approve local law path, chapter one thirty-one. So let's scroll back, shall we? Don't look at the screen, it'll make you dizzy at this point.
How is that secret or secret or?
Yeah, so we have a resolution number.
Back up, sorry, two more. Does secret resolution first?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Deanna, do you have a?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, thank you very much. Resolution seventy-three, um, we're looking at the, we did the environmental review, phase one. We're doing a NAGDAC on this, considering we had a short form, a coastal assessment form review. The planning board determined, um, not on October tenth, though. That should be modified that date.
September eighth.
September.
I want to say it was the eighteenth, because that's what I have in the other resolution. I corrected the second one, but I see I didn't correct this one.
Yeah, so let's make that change. Planning board on the eighteenth, modify, then determine the project as consistent with the L W R P. We've reviewed the draft NAGDAC. And again, this is just a modification to an existing law we adopted earlier. Okay, um, any further discussion before we take up resolution seventy-three, which is determining a designation of nonsignificance, local law number F, which then would be six, yeah. Local law number six of twenty twenty-three. But no, it wasn't.
Where are you now? So this, you're.
It's proposal of a law F.
Well, wait, did you, you moved and voted on?
We're, we're about to do that. We're about to do the NAGDAC. On the NAGDAC, I'm just referring to this now as local law six instead of F.
Not yet, because until you're adopted.
Right, okay.
Right, so it's still, it's still called F on this resolution.
Local law, yeah, thank you. You would think.
Proposed.
Proposed. Who would like to move the NAGDAC? Julia?
Selma.
Who would like to second?
Second.
Jacob? Uh, all in favor? Christine King, Bill Hamer, planning board, extraordinary, talented folks, okay? And myself, aye. We're moving now right into, uh, resolution number seventy-four, adopting this amendment to the existing law. Now we can refer to it as local law number six, amending chapter one thirty-one.
Number.
Am I right on that?
We thought it was number five, Deanna.
Okay, have to go luck.
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't, shouldn't F turn into six?
No.
No. Because we had an introductory.
We lost a letter there somewhere.
We did, mhm. I think it might have been the, one of the first versions of the, of the V N T that we ended up consolidating into one, possibly. So that's why we use letters, so that we don't get confused when we assign the numbers.
The letters.
Sometimes we do lose a letter, but we don't worry about it.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's review. Who says, who says it's not really riveting here at the Town Board meetings?
So this, this date for the notice of public hearing, I just asked Deanna to confirm this for us, was September twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So we got a couple of date typos on.
No, no, there's a blank where.
Whereas, where there's a blank.
Oh, whereas one.
Number five.
Number five, yep, okay. Uh, September twenty-four, that.
Twenty-four, is this the right one?
Okay, correct.
That's a continued public hearing.
No, this isn't the right one. You must have another one. There was one, I didn't get it. There was another one.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Uh, let's just review.
Yeah, we're going to read the language, yes.
Yeah, let's just review our resolution. We determined, made the determination, secret determination earlier. The copy of the proposal for law was provided to the planning board within A F and C A F, and their recommendation was submitted back to us. They will be the matter September eighteenth at their meeting. We've adopted that NAGDAC. And we have determined that it would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, in fact, quite the opposite. And that a draft D I S would not be prepared and not be necessary. It's consistent with the L W R P. We have deliberated on this law, which is really an amendment to a previous law, local law number five of twenty twenty-three. And did you want to make an amendment to the date? Or insert a date there on that hearing? All right. It's coming. Are we coming?
Deanna's getting her steps in.
Deanna, you may want to grab all those. Okay. We're waiting on that date. Which one?
Or do we have to wait?
One minute, have to wait on that one, because it's related. Seventy-five is inventory. Let's review it, shall we?
Okay.
So one of the other changes we made is to the law as it relates to inventory of stop signs. Make it more efficient, that we didn't have to change the law each time we added a stop sign. And that is attached here. This would be seventy-five would be the resolution for crosswalk inventory.
So it's stop signs and crosswalks.
And it shows that we're adding Elm Street.
So in future, Robert, if a need for a new stop sign is identified, you know, whether that stop is directly to the board or via the highway department, the board would act, we would amend the inventory, and that would be that. So, yeah.
All right, are we inserting?
We have a publication date of two-three for that blank in your resolution number seventy-four.
Under seventy-four.
Dotting resolution, right.
Okay.
For the advertisement.
Yes.
Is October third correct?
So as amended, resolution seventy-four, ISO move, including the publication date of October third, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, seventy-five is, uh, stop sign, crosswalk, inventory, and ISO move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, uh, we are at.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, could I just slow you down for one second?
Did I, did I, did we?
Let, let her cut.
Loop seventy-five?
So that was Robert and Christine.
I, I'm.
Seconding?
Yeah.
Christine?
I second.
So the first one.
Oh, the first one.
Oh, wait, which one, seventy-three, is that what you're talking about?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
I was, I have seventy-four, I don't have seventy-three, and I don't have seventy-five.
Okay.
All right, well, we can go to the other.
So seventy-five.
Seventy-five was.
I, I'm.
He moved it, Bill seconded.
Thank you.
Seventy-three was Julia and Jacob.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, just make sure you have.
No worries.
Julie moved, Jacob seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
Make sure you're ready.
I am, yes.
Seventy-six, seventy-six is approving the change in the water rates. Initially, the water department had requested a ten percent increase. We discussed the matter about that we felt that there were sufficient reserves for any repairs, I mean, minor or major, necessary, given the particular climate, where there are high energy costs, once again. Don't get me started on why. We thought it was not appropriate to go past what was part of a five-year plan, which is a five percent increase. And so that's what resolution number seventy-six on water rates reflects, is that five percent increase. And, uh, people would like to move that, Mr. Williams onto the water board.
Some moved.
Good idea. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Julia.
I think Julia got that one, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And myself, thank you very much. Okay, C D B G application, um, what do we think, folks? Any thoughts before we entertain a resolution to that effect? If you are in the water district, by the way, that increase is effective at the beginning of the year. That will be reflected in your January twenty twenty-four bill. And I believe that has been articulated over the last five years, that that would be the strategy of the water board. C D B G, let's, let's get to that. Any thoughts? We, we like this idea? Want to support the application?
Yeah, I think it's a good, um, it's a good project within our delineated area. It's already being used, so we should upgrade it and, you know, put lighting in, as Randy referred to, so that it's safer to use and, you know, properly maintained. So hopefully we'll get the grant. And as I asked earlier, two hundred thousand dollars is the maximum that we can ask for, so.
I agree, and I think you'd concur with the conversation we were having earlier about the feasibility for sewer extension and the ultimate vision for that, pardon, gentlemen.
Anybody else? No? I couldn't agree more about the safety issue. I've been there at night, I'm sort of horrified where I see people just sort of move in, disappear into the darkness in the woods. And I just, my heart starts pounding for them because I worry about, you know, will they make it to Route nine safely? So having proper lighting, a proper place to walk. You know, quite frankly, I mean, not to be critical, I'm sure folks in the future will be critical of the moves that we make, but I don't know how that grocery store was able to exist without a, a sidewalk being mandated for that. You know, it, it should have been done years ago, so I'm glad that we can correct that error perhaps in the planning. All right, um, I will, I'd be happy to move this.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
All right, we are at a discussion, Greenway Grant for Rhinebeck and Red Hook Bike, Pike Trails. Bike Trail, so we already have lots of signage, Greenway Bike Trails. How many years ago was that? Madam former chair of the planning board, I'm just, I'm pretty much.
Pre-born, you mean?
Well, those trails, those bike trails and the signage over the road, like a lot.
Fifteen plus?
At least.
At least, yeah.
So they need to be replaced, um, a lot of signage there. So we've been approached by folks working with the town and Village of Rhinebeck. There's a portion of those Greenway Trails, Bike Trails, that extend up into Red Hook, and they are asking us for a proportional contribution. Should the grant be funded, we would be contributing three thousand dollars, roughly speaking, towards the project, which could be as much as forty thousand five hundred when you include matches. So, let me get there. There was a request, there's the resolution, which is seventy-seven.
No, I think it's seventy-eight.
It's seventy-eight.
It's seventy-eight.
That's C D B G seventy-seven.
Thank you. Um, okay.
And the one that's in the packet needs to be corrected?
Right, because it says six thousand, because it includes the project amount, when our match would be three, so we, we want the resolution to reflect the three thousand, right? And here's the, uh.
So this is what's in the packet, but what I sent you has the communication. So you might want to mark that up to make sure, I wonder what your records say.
Application is due November third. Thirty-one existing signs need replacement. An additional forty are needed to fill in lost or missing signs. The exact count could be about seventy-five. Some of the new signs will be arrows directing bikers and hikers to Rhinebeck and Red Hook Village Centers. Other signs will direct Empire State Trail. Other signs will direct Empire State Trail users to and from the Village Centers. And then labor and cost of signs and so on and so forth are detailed in the correspondence. So why don't we go ahead and make that change for us to our resolution number seventy-eight? Now therefore be resolved number one. That's described here, herein with a portion of the required match up to three thousand. Why don't we just make it clear, three thousand dollars cash contribution.
I think we said a required cash match is what we suggested.
Cash match, yeah. Up to three thousand to be funded by the town.
Right.
And we want to, once again, thank the village and town of Rhinebeck, working collaboratively. We can accomplish a lot for Blue and Dutchess. That's resolution number seventy-eight. And that is something we would like to, to move that trails. Who's, who's trails around here?
Me.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Myself. For the folks at home, we want to remind you, we are working with Bard College to try to establish a trail network on all of the Bard College properties. Would extend, um, once they close on the UTS property. Would extend all the way from UTS, but also provide an opportunity for folks to get off of River Road and progress all the way up to the existing main campus areas. And we're talking about conservation easements and potentially some public parklands there. So all of which is a matter of discussion right now, and then something that we'll need to gather some appraisal information and understand how we can work on that potential venture that'll achieve the goals of, of the college and also of the community. So we look forward in the next couple of months to maybe having something to report back to you. I mention that because it relates, we're talking about that area of town here, with signage and so on and so forth. Okay, what else do we have? We've got our justice court grant, shall we? As you know, we have replaced the generator here. We also received grant monies for that from the county, but we received some grant funding for the community center. We've provided the community center with a generator. It's the heating and cooling center. And an AED, by the way, shopping lane. It's an office of the aging site, and they had no AED, so we did provide them with one of those as well. This grant opportunity is justice court-related, and so with the assistance of the Honorable Jonah Treeblosser, we will be applying for up to thirty thousand dollars towards that very large generator, I might add. Hopefully get us another thirty years, like the last one did. Any questions about this, folks?
And so this would be a reimbursement grant for the generator already purchased.
Exactly. Obviously, a generator is necessary if you're going to conduct a court when the power outage goes on. Otherwise, you have to send everybody home, should it go out. So important for the court system as well. All right, seventy-nine. I won't get this wrong, will I?
No.
Thank you. I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
All right. For the folks at home, we'll remind you, we go out to bid, trying to get the best prices on everything. And the highway department, the same thing. Each year we go out for bid for all those exciting things that you at home, I'm sure, are thinking about, hot mix asphalt and so on and so forth. And so we have a series of resolutions, bid results included here related to those materials. What's calculated is not only the cost of the material, but the cost of hauling it and for a combined bid. And those are reviewed by the engineer, by our attorney, and by the highway superintendent. And then the highway superintendent forwards to us recommendations on the rewards. And so we have a series of resolutions that support the analysis of the most responsible bid for these materials and activities. Resolution number... Authorizing the purchase of hot mix asphalt. The award going to...
So there are two awards.
Right.
So there's a series of, and you'll see that attached to these resolutions, there's a, there's a bid tabulation that gives you the specific amounts the, uh, the contract provides for. And in the case of, well, in case of each of these, I guess, you'll see that the, the winning bidder's highlighted. And you can see that, I'll just note that they're evaluated on the basis of the adjusted price, so that they're apples and apples, based on how far they are, because then the, the actual pricing is at the plant, okay? So there's an adjusted price that's a basis for evaluation, but the contract price will be at the plant, okay? So for the, for the first one, the hot mix asphalt, you have several of the materials, which would be the item one dense, item three dense, item five shim, item seven F top quarter from Calaruso, and item six F top, six F top half from Kalanam. So those are the hot mix awards.
Right. So before I become a hot mess, let's approve the hot mix, resolution number eighty. Jacob, I think this is, your, the, is on the highway department. Would you want to move this?
I would love to move it.
Don't anybody second it. All right.
I'll second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Myself, thank you. We have eighty-one.
And that would be the ice control. And in that case, that's a single product, so a single planer, so that would be red...
Red, eighty. Eleven and a half dollars per ton. Okay, eighty-one. I wonder if Jacob's going to move this one.
So...
I'll second.
Uh-oh, that was Bill. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Myself, thank you very much. Moving right along, road services and materials pursuant to town procurement. So now we get into the long list, topsoil. Item four, so on and so forth. Riprap, I don't know what riprap is. It's not a band, it's not a groove. It's rocks that are of a certain size and shape used to support banks and surround often culverts. Okay.
And Mr. Supervisor, again, Theresa's bid tabulation shows the recommended award based on the little bid, based on the adjusted prices. And on the front page of the resolution, you'll see the specific item identified, and then the winning bidder for each one of those.
Better.
So these are for materials where the amount is not estimated to be over thirty-five thousand dollars per year. So they're more of an RFP type item, they're just as needed. This is where they'd be purchased in twenty twenty-four for the price indicated on the tabulation.
Thank you. Okay. Is that eighty-two? Is this eighty-two?
Yep.
So moved.
Thank you, Jacob. Is there a second, Christine?
Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Myself, thank you very much. Okay, and then also a letter from Theresa, our highway super, suggesting one minor reallocation of seven thousand dollars from one budget line to another is our correspondence.
In the proposed budget.
In the proposed tentative budget, moving to preliminary at some point in this month. And if you'd like to find out more about the tentative budget, it's on the website. Also details the more than seventy-five capital projects that we've been working on over the last several years, along with some pretty pictures. Okay. Are there any public comments from anybody before we entertain a motion to go into attorney-client? If not, I want to remind you again, October twenty-four, because our meeting is not until after that, is the important referendum for the volunteer firefighters, their stipend. Only village residents can vote on that, because the fire companies are under the purview of the villages. But we all benefit when people do this important work. That said, I wish you good night. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into attorney-client.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.